This is the South St. Paul School Board meeting of Monday, November 27. I'd like to call the school board meeting to order. Lisa, could you please call the roll?
Director T. Human or Felton?
Here.
Human?
Here.
Weber? Ms. Abson W. Felton?
Here.
Claflin?
Here.
Lala Bertie?
Here.
And Chair Roche?
Here.
That's six present.
Excellent, thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, up first, I would ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from November 13th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? With that, the motion carries, which brings us to the most exciting part of the night. As always, for board meetings is our Quality in Action, in which we get to hear about some of the great things from around our district. Tonight, we welcome Lincoln Principal Teresa Starkman and Assistant Principal Jen Sacksar. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, School Board, Dr. Zambrino, and South St. Paul community. We're here very excited tonight to talk to you about our new literacy curriculum. We know that you have heard a lot about the signs of reading lately, and you got to hear about UFLY, so we wanted to talk to you about wit and wisdom.
We're hooking up a presentation for you. Give us just a second.
That's okay. The first couple of slides are just really, first of all, we wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the investment that you've made in new curriculum materials that are just state-of-the-art. We're going to go through and show you the kids using them in action, and then some positive reviews and remarks back from teachers. And then we also just wanted to make the connection between why UFLY and wit and wisdom are so important together. And so, a technical difficulty. So UFLY addresses kind of that decoding piece, right? That's that early phonics, phonemic awareness for kindergarten first and second grade. And then wit and wisdom is the comprehension part, but that's K5. So we want kids to know and understand how to use text, starting in kindergarten, and being able to do it all through fifth grade.
So the great part about wit and wisdom is that it uses exceptional texts. It has a balanced literacy, so you're working on not only just the reading, the writing, the speaking, and the listening. It's opportunities for practicing those skills, and it addresses standards, not just literacy standards, but also social studies and science standards. In wit and wisdom, you are, the students are participating in a deep dive into the content. So they develop all the areas of literacy. And the slide that we have in this part shows you how all components of literacy embed together, and why those foundational skills and wit and wisdom working together builds the skills of our students, so that they are deep thinkers, and problem solvers, and critical thinkers having conversations around our texts. Want me to keep going or wait? Okay. You will also get to see that with wit and wisdom, for every lesson, for every module, excuse me, that's what their, the units are called, they start with an essential question, essential and focusing question. So this is the broad spectrum of what the lesson and the learning will be. And this is displayed in classrooms, as well as it's reviewed before, during, and after the lessons. So the students are always engaging in that question, that essential question, and always point back to, excuse me, the focus of why they're learning what they're learning. So setting that purpose and then sticking to that purpose.
So the next slide had several pictures of kids with texts in their hand, because what I want you to know, one of the vital pieces to this is that kids get to have the same book. No one's sharing. Like, everybody has the book in their hands. They're unlocking meaning from complex texts. And a complex text is something that builds vocabulary along with knowledge. And it's at grade level. So this is a time that every student gets grade-level material. Differentiation takes place at a different point, but the bulk of the lesson is done at grade level. Students acquire vocabulary much faster. Like she mentioned, that they're focusing on a specific topic, and a lot of them can be tied to the Science and Social Studies standards as well. And then what we've noticed, just the tremendous amount of writing that kids do. So they write about texts, they write about stories, there are just the deep writing. The next one also is about socratic seminars. And a socratic seminar, you see it a lot in high schools and stuff, but we do it in kindergarten now. Like, kids get in groups, and they have sentence starters, like, "I have a question about," or "tell me more about that," or "I disagree because my opinion is this." And it's really amazing to watch it through all of the grade levels. If you ever want to come, we'd be happy to let you come in during literacy time and see this amazing work. Just the complex thinking. So not every child might be a reader at grade level, but every child's a thinker. And so being able to participate in answering the questions, and using their thinking skills, and being a contributor, just to watch the confidence in kids and watch the participation. The other piece I want to mention is, we do not get called to classrooms during literacy time. They're so engaged, and because of the rigor and just the high-level quality of the books and stuff, that the kids are engaged, and the reading blocks 90 minutes. It's a long time.
So on our next slide, we wanted to show how teachers have been able to integrate their science standards into their literacy blocks. And, for example, in third grade, their unit or their module is called the C, and then they integrated mystery science and engineering submarines. And so combined the two to show students how everything is interconnected. And then they're going to actually be wrapping up that module by going to Sea Life at the Mall of America to make a connection between all of it. So just another way of taking what the students are learning and applying it in field trips and across curricular areas, just reinforcing to students how everything we learn about builds on each other and is connected in some way.
So the next few slides we are sharing is around the positives, the things that teachers have said. So kindergarten teachers have said that one of the things they like about their modules is that they have developmentally appropriate movement that's attached to literacy. So bouncing the ball like the boy in the book. They do think, pair, share, and mix and mingle, so they'll walk around, and then they'll be told to stop, and then they'll have to sit and talk with that partner about a specific topic or a question, and then they'll move around the room again. So there's a lot of movement. It's not just sitting. There's a lot of different ways that they're engaging with the materials. And then one of the kindergarten teachers pointed out that beginning sounds in UFLY help them spell words. And so one of the modules in wit and wisdom is around labeling. And so they're using those beginning sounds that they're using as kindergartners, and then labeling the pictures in their writing. So it's just connected through this entire time. First and second grade, they said our favorite part of the curriculum is the amount of time students spend with books in their hands. Having multiple copies of the books is a little bit of a storage challenge, but it outweighs the excitement and engagement students have when they're exploring the books on their own with a partner.
Perfect. And then for grades three through five, the things that were really highlighted there were that this curriculum is engaging, it's active, and students are learning at a rigorous rate. Our reading material is rigorous. It provides rich conversations. The students are given many opportunities to converse about their texts. And then what they have found from those conversations, the comprehension has become so much deeper, and that's been an area that we've wanted to grow in across the board with our literacy skills. We've known the kids know foundational, basic skills, but then applying it and being able to talk about texts really strengthens their understanding of the texts. Students are writing more than they've ever written before, and our writing, we are already seeing improvements. At conferences, teachers were showing work that was done in September and the end of October, and students who were able to write a sentence in the beginning of September had multi-paragraphs at the end of October. So the amount of time that they can dedicate to writing because it's embedded into the curriculum is really showing in their work. In third grade, one of the, some of the highlights they brought up there was the knowledge-rich experiences, the extended learning that is done through the exposure of complex texts. In fourth grade, the thing that was most, they like most about wit and wisdom is the time when students are able to get up and move into pairs or groups. So a lot of collaboration is done, so teaching kids those skills that they're going to use throughout life. And when you'll be able to look at our slides, you'll see there's lots of visuals, posters, anchor charts that are constantly up and used and referenced throughout the teaching and learning. And then in fifth grade, the highlight there is that, again, students are active and engaged in their learning. They've seen an increase in reading and writing skills by their students already at this time of year. And they're hearing conversations about the texts spill into specialists and recess and lunch. So it's not isolated within their literacy block, it's starting to become their natural conversations.
And then we just wanted to share, because we know that when you purchase a curriculum where we want to, we want to serve all of our students in our buildings, and so we wanted to show you some connections and collaborations that we're having with our special ed teachers, students who receive special ed services, and EL services. And so some teachers have shared that using some of the tactile pieces from UFLY, again, a lot of the materials from wit and wisdom, they're able to take and differentiate to use in their classrooms. And then the EL teacher said that while she doesn't use UFLY, she's noticing the difference in the way that kids can know their sounds and letters and be able to spell words earlier in kindergarten and first grade as English learners. So it's a really important connection.
And on our final slide, we had some quotes by teachers, and I was going to have you just read them yourselves, but I will read them for you so I can reference my notes. The first one is, "Although the implementation has been a challenge, and it has felt a bit overwhelming at times, we are feeling very positive about working with this curriculum. It is challenging work, but it is good work." And another staff member said, "The staff development, team planning time, and time that we have with our equity and instructional coach to plan and understand the curriculum is crucial to our successful implementation." So as you can see and hear from the teacher quotes provided, the work hasn't been easy work by any means, right? The implementation has been a challenge, but in all aspects, no matter how challenging that has been and how change can be hard, everyone is seeing the good that's coming from it. And we're already seeing our results in our UFLY, we're seeing outcomes from our students just in performance in the classroom. And I think, you know, Teresa spoke to, we're not getting calls for behavior and issues or breaks for students during their academic time. So that tells me their brains are engaged, so that's where their focus is. And I think that's one of the key things with students. When they are engaged, and they are pushed, and they are challenged, they rise to that challenge. We have to build their stamina, and that's been part of what the work has been this fall. But now, as we progress throughout the year, I really think we are going to see just the fruitful of our learning and see a huge change in our students. So it's proven that when you're able to collaborate with your team, you're provided professional development so that you can do the work that you need to do, the outcome is the one you want to achieve, and we will see the change that is needed. So on that note, do you have any questions for us?
I just want to say, thank you. Your enthusiasm for this curriculum change is really, really great. And also for kind of giving a bigger picture. My son is in second grade, and he was like, "We had a socratic discussion today." And I was jaw on the floor trying to figure out. So that's fabulous. Thank you so much.
Well, and our apologies on the tech side of things, but so deeply appreciate the efforts that are going into this. I understand as a teacher how challenging and sometimes a little scary curriculum changes can be, because you're suddenly mounting up all new efforts into things you thought you knew how to do up until this point, and then you're changing those things. And hearing about student excitement, and hearing about some of the evidence that you're seeing early on, when we're so concerned about academic outcomes right now, I'm just really excited to see the efforts that are going into that right now.
Thank you.
So thank you to you and the teachers as well.
I applaud the teachers, because it is, you know, when you make a shift like that, it's not just a practice, but a philosophy in some cases. And it takes a lot of brain power, and we know already, teaching is a lot of physical power too, all day, and energy. So, and I just, I really applaud them because they're very positive about it. And, I mean, we asked for feedback and pictures, and we got more than we could use. We would have had a 45-minute presentation had we used all of it. So I do hope you have an opportunity to see the slideshow, because we have some really phenomenal pictures that teachers have taken as the kids have been doing the work and the learning.
Yeah, we'll be sure to get that out. And I agreed, I mean, our teachers are working so hard with this one, and what I, the word you use, I've heard over and over, rigor, rigor, rigor. And that just gets me so excited, because I know our kids are capable, and I know our staff are, but having the right tools for the staff, and then that rigor in the classroom, it's exciting. We're going to see really big dividends on that investment of time and effort, and all the pep talks that probably have to happen to get through, you know, another new lesson today, and.
And the purposeful professional development we've been able to provide, and really giving that time to teachers, and we've had it once a month since school started, has really been beneficial to the rollout of this, because they feel prepared to do the next step. And it wasn't all thrown out at the beginning, it's in little pieces. So I think whoever did the schedule and made that planning and.
Yeah, I was going to say the same.
Thanks to Amy. It's, it has helped a ton for our teachers.
That's a great point, too, because when you bring in a curriculum, it's the professional development that comes alongside that is as powerful, or maybe even sometimes more, right?
Yeah. It's been very thoughtful, and thank you to Amy and to Candace for their collaboration around getting the time and the right people in the room at the right time, so that the teachers can, you know. We have always tried to give some professional development and then a little bit of collaboration time. Some of these days are all professional development, and yet we're able to carve some time out another time, so that they get all the pieces that they need, so they don't feel drained all the time. They are working really, really hard, but they are also is equally enthusiastic about this, too. So it's just really nice to be able to, it was a great purchase, and we just are super thankful because we know it's best for our kids.
And I would say having the Equity and Instructional Coach is another huge piece. Lauren Ryan has been doing two jobs. She's not able to be here tonight, but she has been a huge piece in making this a successful team of people to get this implemented and help support the teachers, so.
Well, and one of the things that I don't think is commonly known, but teaching sometimes is a very lonely profession, when you're the only adult in the room. And to be able to have a team that you get to collaborate with, and connect with, and have a common mission with, that just really strengthens the practice you can do in the classroom. So that's very exciting.
It is.
In the image of kids sitting and actually holding books in their hands, I could cry. I'm just like, set the technology aside, and let's smell, breathe, taste a real book.
Yep.
So I love that you said that, about that the kids are holding books. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks for your hard work.
All right, I have a second sort of Quality in Action announcement tonight that you do not see on your agenda. But as a board, we participate in a professional organization called MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association. It's where many of our board receives our training and our sort of guidance and the work that we do. And something very exciting coming up in January, MSBA's All-State Committee has selected our very own Wendy Felton for our school board All-State Honorees. And so at the January Leadership, at the January Leadership Concert, or Conference, there will be a luncheon that Wendy will also be receiving an award there as well for her lengthy service on the board for our community. There is a wealth of people who wrote some incredibly kind letters that I've already shared with Wendy, but more to come from there as well. So congratulations.
Thank you. I hadn't heard anything about that.
All right. Moving on to our next items, I'm pretty sure I've lost Wendy for a few moments. Want to highlight, we did not have any public listening submissions prior to this meeting. Public listening submissions can always be done on our website, go directly to the board, and can be done at the very first meeting of the month at 4:15, with a couple of board members right here. Prior to this meeting, we had our Committee of the Whole meeting. We spent much of our time meeting with Amy Winter, talking about world's best workforce, some of our student outcomes and achievement, a real significant focus for the board and for our school district as a whole right now, and really kind of diving into the data of our student achievement, where we're at, and making some really solid plans on where we're going forward from there. And next, I will turn it over to Dr. Zambrino for some highlights from around the district.
All right.
With or without a slideshow right now?
Sorry, this is the best visual you're going to get. It's not that good, but just start by saying, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday, our students, their families, staff, and of course, the broader South St. Paul community. I shared with some folks just how appreciative I am of this opportunity to get to lead here. It's a special place, and so always good to pause and acknowledge things that we're grateful for. Grateful for the team we have. So coming in your mailbox this week, please be looking for the new Six Times. And so that's our communication to the broader community. And what was our team, Lisa Brandek, our Heads Up Communications, Dinette Childs, and others contributing the information for that. It's a really great snapshot of all the amazing things going on in the district. And after the last one, it was kind of fun. I got some random emails from folks just saying, hey, we read what you're doing, and we really liked seeing that. And elders and folks who didn't necessarily have kids in the school. So be on the lookout for that. Some of the things you'll see in there is what we're working on. So we talked a little bit at our cow around how can we amplify student voice, like we have our student reps here, but lots of ways we're trying to hear from our students and engage them in making our district the best place to be a student. We have information around our new safety protocol, so we've spent a lot of time assessing how we're doing with our response to crisis and training with the I Love You Guys Foundation. So you'll learn a little bit about that. We have new curriculum conversations happening as we sunset PYP and MYP, and kind of do a little bit of a reset. We are keeping the diploma program. You can see some information around things going on in classrooms, and then things happening around community ed. Related to community ed, we have, in the coming weeks, we'll have our community ed and early learning catalog. So that'll be coming to your mailbox, and you'll see information around programs for early learning. So that's from birth to age five, youth enrichment. Very excited that we now have lifeguards, so we can actually have swimming lessons back. So that is one of the things that kind of went away from a lot of places during the pandemic, really hard to get lifeguards, so excited about that. Gymnastics, driver's ed, lots of things for youth, adult enrichment as well, so fitness classes, there's the lap swimming, culinary, health and wellness. And then our senior center, we highlight every time, some great things happening there as well. So some of the social trips and gatherings and activities that happen at Central Square. So be on the lookout for the Six Times, as well as the Community Ed catalog. Highlighting a few things that happened around the district, so Middle School Web, which stands for Where Everyone Belongs, that team hosted a family bonfire night at Central Square. Always an interesting one when you're having a bonfire with students and staff, but has gone off really well. And so people were invited to come and roast smores and just celebrate belonging together. So thank you to the web team for pulling that together. Recently, we had students from Lincoln Center and Capoja able to visit the Capitol, the state Capitol, as part of their government, learning about, government unit, learning about the branches, the judicial, legislative, and executive. I saw Rick Hansen in the picture with them, so exciting to get them there, because they very well may be the future folks there, setting the laws for us. Last week, Lincoln Center's Students with Unique Needs Program, the SUN program, had a soup-making party to celebrate. They read stone soup, and then they made soup. So it was fun to watch the kids putting ingredients on and then serving it. I think the number one feedback I heard from them was, it was hot, so we did a lot of stirring and blowing on the soup, so no one would get burned, so that was good. We had a Thanksgiving celebration, Lincoln Center students, I was able to tag along down at the John Carroll Building, and they did a Charlie Brown-themed Thanksgiving celebration. So Deb Griffith helped organize that. Patrick, her son, was there, as well as Ms. Geisberg, our counselor. So they had pie, popcorn, jelly beans, the standard Charlie Brown Thanksgiving fare. But it was really nice to see our kids, you know, bringing some joy and laughter to our elders in the community. And fun that our community's small enough, we just walk them over there and do that. And then we also had a Senior Center social on that theme, celebrating Thanksgiving. So the November social was turkey and gravy. But for those who aren't aware, we have a, every month, they have a social, and the next one's coming up on December 14th, from 11:30 to 1:00 at Central Square Community Center. And so always encourage folks to be engaged. You don't have to be a member of the Senior Center to come to the Potluck or any of those events, but certainly would encourage everybody to participate in that. It's very inexpensive and lots of fun opportunities over there. We had some other dates and things that we'll put on the website, or the schools will share, since we don't have the visual here, but.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Excellent, thank you. Up next, we have our Consent Agenda items, which are financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature, have been a part of the board packet and presentation there. At this time, I'm looking for a motion for our Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Then, we have a wealth of policies under review. We have some policies that are on for their second of three readings. Policy number 102 for equal education, 301, school district administration, 302, superintendent, 303, superintendent selection, 304, superintendent contract duties and evaluation, 305, policy implementation, 306, administrator code of ethics, 418, drug ethic, drug-free workplace and drug-free school, 419, tobacco-free environment, 515, protection and privacy of pupil records, 601, school district curriculum and instructional goals, 602, organization of school calendar and school day, and 616 for school district accountability systems. We also have several policies that are now there for their first of three readings. Policy number 424 for license status, 425 for staff development, 507 for corporal punishment, 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams, and 806 for crisis management. All policies are under review for three readings, and will be voted on after that. And next, that brings us to our business items. And up first, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the revised 23, 24 school calendar.
So moved.
Second?
And for discussion, I'll turn to Amy Winter, as we have a couple proposed calendar changes in how we're organizing some staff days.
Thank you. Yeah, it came to a request from the sites, two proposals for this current calendar year. The first one is reviewing the middle school conference schedule. Currently, right now, we have conferences scheduled from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on March 6th, and then again on March 7th, and so students are in session during the day, and then evening conferences. And the proposal is, is just to stagger one of those days a week later. So the proposal is to move conferences, keep conferences the same on Wednesday, March 6th, but move the Thursday one to a week later on March 14th. And that would just give a little bit of break versus doing 12-hour workdays, two days in a row, and then going into a professional development day.
And this was discussed during our Committee of the Whole meeting, also has already been kind of reviewed and come from sort of teachers' needs as well, so, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Yep, should I do the second one?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, the second request is, is that currently, right now, Friday, April 26th and Friday, May 24th are both days off for students, so students are not in session. But for staff, Friday, April 26th was a comp day, and then the May date was a professional development day. And the request from the staff is to just flip those, so make the April date be the professional development day, so that they could get the professional development a little earlier in the school year versus right at the end of the school year. And so it wouldn't impact families, it's just impacting staff.
Perfect. Any discussion? Any discussion, questions? All right. As it was already discussed in committee of the whole, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Amy. Up next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution establishing combined polling places for certain multiple precincts and designated voting hours for school districts. Elections not held on the day the statewide election is held. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And for discussion, we learned a lot through elections in this last year as we did have to conduct a special education for, or special election for a board member. And this is a resolution that we have discovered that we need to pass before December ends just in case we do have to conduct any sort of special elections along the way. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Hume?
Yes.
W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T. Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
With that, the motion carries. Got it right the first time. You didn't have to like correct me in doing the wrong call for vote. All right. With that, it's a fairly short meeting tonight, but I do want to introduce our school board reps. Before we do our board reports, we're also going to get a little bit of information from our reps. This is Renata and Luis. Getting to take center stage for the first time in your roles.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. I hope everybody's had a wonderful Thanksgiving. So recently, we've met with the PAC Advisory. So it's a PAC meeting. So it's Principal Advisory Council update with Mr. Ochaki. And the people that are part of the council are the children that are peers that were also wanting to be a student representative so we can all combine our thoughts and our opinions together to make the school a better place for everyone. So recently, we've had four meetings, I believe, and we've mostly focused about our Win Wednesdays and how there are successes and challenges that everybody faces on those days. Luis, you can start us off on successes.
Well, we have, we thought about many positives that we have. Some of them are, we have extra time to get work done, calm and rest day, time to get help and assistance by not only teachers, but like also students that need help from other students, time like mid-week break from all the early mornings that we have to wake up. You know, it's a later start time, so it's a 9:30 start time instead of the 7:50. And then you can also retake tests, so just being able to do assignments that you couldn't do for a certain reason that you weren't able to assist at, at school that day, or like if you did bad on the test and you want to retake it, is very helpful because it's more one-on smaller classes. The teacher can help you more. Some positives.
Yeah, again, to those successes, I know a lot of kids on Win Wednesday especially, that is their time for a break, like especially for me. Like that is a day that I can know that I have that break, that I know that Monday, Tuesday, okay, if I can't get it done now, I can get it done on Wednesday because I have that time. And especially for me, especially in chemistry, I need that retake. So I go in on Wednesdays and, and especially that, that teacher can have the ability of having that one-on-one relationship with that student, especially because the classes are not full as usually in the day. It's about like, I would say, five people probably in each of those classes. Yeah, those are probably major successes that are going on. Our challenges are, some kids don't take advantage of these Win Wednesdays. They think it's optional. But in our opinion, as the PAC Advisory Board, we think that teachers should have the ability of contacting that student and telling them, you need to come in on these Win Wednesday day, not to make it sound like optional. Like I know many kids that, oh, it's a Win Wednesday, that's so I can get more sleep, I don't need to come in. But that teacher should say, you need to come in face-to-face so I can tell myself, okay, that is a time that they told me to come in, I have to come in. But if they're like sent in the email, I'm not going to look at the email, to be honest. I won't. I won't look at the email. But if that teacher comes up to me and is like, hey, I need you to come in to work on this and this and this because you missed that week. And that Wednesday, for many kids, if they missed weeks or days of school, that is a time for them to catch up on their work and make sure that they're not falling behind. Other items that we explored on the PAC Advisory Board.
Is later start times in general.
Yeah.
So instead of the, we talked about just, because Mr. Ochaki stands at the door every morning and he sees what time students get there, he realized that mostly everyone gets there at eight in the morning instead of the start time at 7:50.
And especially, he said, like, I can see the kids' faces and expressions when like he says, oh, like welcome in, and he goes, no kid actually responds to him. But on that Wednesday, when there is a right start, everybody just has a wonderful like mode, sorry, excuse me. And yeah, it's just like, we mentioned the school, school start time, and then our daily schedules would be probably, we would fix our after-school activities if we want that later start, but that is more to discuss. Also, class electives. So as an IB diploma candidate, I know a lot of IB students want the ability to have more access into different electives because especially if you were an IB diploma, there are certain requirements that you need to achieve that diploma candidate. So we wanted to focus on like what like electives can be offered for the IB diploma kids, not just psychology or like those type of classes. Finally, sorry. Finally, there's winter activities up and running. So girls' basketball started, I think, a week ago. And now boys' basketball also started this, this last week. And then anyone ages 60 and older gets in for free in those activities, and so did wrestling. Wrestling also started. And also, the first day of trimester two starts of Monday, December 4th, and then also the missile toll dance Saturday, December 9th. So, yeah. Any questions?
Well done.
Thank you.
Very well done. Great information.
Thank you.
One of the other benefits, like just as a parent, I've seen with Wednesday is even if you're not going in for that extra help, I think it sort of teaches you how to structure your time.
Yeah.
And let's say you're writing an essay. Sometimes you can't write that just in that window that is the duration of one class. So if you need like the three-hour power block of time to like work on something, it teaches you how to structure that time for those pieces that you need, which come next year, as a senior, you are going to need to learn how to navigate that freshman year of college.
Yeah. And like plus that Win Wednesday, for me typically is like that time for that break again. Like that is the time that I can work around and say, okay, I'm going to get this done on Wednesday. Okay, I'm going to get this done on Monday, so I don't, I have more time to work on other stuff on Win Wednesday. So, yeah.
Time management.
Yeah.
Learning how to juggle that schedule.
Yeah.
That is, that is critical adult skills.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. I will turn to our other board members for their committee reports and what they have been up to as well. I will start with Kim Hume.
I have no update today.
And Wendy Felton?
Well, the exciting thing that I have coming up, starting tomorrow, as you know, I am the representative of South St. Paul to Intermediate District 917, which is main office is down at Dakota County Technical College. Starting tomorrow through Friday, I will be attending what we call the AESA National Conference, which is being held in California. It's the Association of, for special service agencies. As Intermediate 917 is very, very wonderful, helping our, our students with special needs and with students that wish to attend the VOTAC down in Dakota County. So I will be attending that session. I also will be working with one of our other attendees that are, that is coming, Marcy McGuire. Her and I will be leading a session at this AESA conference. And I also want to say a huge, huge thank you to the MSBA for picking me to serve as one of their all-state school board members. After having served on this board in my sixth term, in my 22nd year, I am so thankful and grateful and loving and caring to our staff and our students and everyone who has participated in all, all of our events in this district. It is truly an honor, and I'm so grateful for everyone for, for being so caring and loving. And a huge, huge thank you to Dr. Zambrino, Dr. Dave Webb, Dr. Michael Faver, the three superintendents that I've known personally, and also our teacher at the secondary, Mr. Olson, and of course, Board Chairman John Roche for giving letters of recommendation about me to the MSBA. So this is a true, honestly grateful thing that we'll be attending in January at the MSBA conference, which is held annually in Minneapolis at the Convention Center. And I do encourage, if any of our other board members can attend that event, that conference, we can have our own deluxe table set up in the conference. So this is a true honor, and I'm truly thankful and so grateful to everyone for their support for me in the last six elections. So thank you so very, very much.
Excellent. Tim Felton?
Oh, congratulations, Wendy. It's wonderful. I don't have anything to add. The open board, South St. Paul Open Board meets this week, so I don't have anything to add.
All right. To the other end, Anne Claflin?
Thank you. The Local Issues Meeting did not happen in November. We are looking to December to meet. And the chamber is also looking for a new president, so the planning of those meetings is a little less organized than often has been. But those will resume. The Finance Facilities and Long Range Planning Committee also met on November 16th. We received a quarterly budget update and seems very similar to past years. The timing of payments has been a little different, but it was very informative to hear about how the money is being spent. And quite a bit was, of the discussion was around the, the new curriculum for Witten Wisdom, buying that upfront, just the timing of when things are paid for in the school year shifts a little bit. And the last thing I wanted to share with the board and the community was that I was able to chaperone one of those student trips to the state Capitol, and it was really fun. It was great seeing it through their eyes. And these were third graders who don't really know that much about government, but they were fascinated by the building, especially how much it cost, how much it would cost to build now. But they kept asking questions of the tour guide. They kept asking, why? Why? And I think the tour guide got a little tired of answering that question, but the kids kept asking because they were curious. And I hope those kids keep asking why. That is a good question to ask, especially a good question to ask around government. So I absolutely loved joining that field trip. It was a lot of fun.
Wonderful. Nick and Lala Burdi?
I have no updates tonight.
Excellent. All right. I also want to send best wishes from the board to Monica Weber, who could not be here with us tonight, and our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family tonight. Tonight, we, I am looking for a motion to move us into closed session per open meeting law and associated statute 13D dot 03 for an update on teacher negotiations.
So moved?
Second.
With that, we will be moving into a closed session. Thanks so much, everyone.